Good evenings, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be getting started in just a second if you just bear with us, please. It's awful loud tonight. And the mic's still on. All right, I think that's about everything. Good evening and welcome to the City of Smyrna Planning and Zoning Meeting. Today is March 11th, 2019 at 6:01 PM, and this meeting's called to order. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting's conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions from the board. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you come forward, one at a time, state your name and address for the record, sign the sign-in sheet at the podium, just your name and street address, and please direct all your comments to the board. At this time, we'd like to ask that everyone turn off your phones. I almost said pagers, because I know a couple people back there in the back that have pagers. That was a little, sorry, humor. As it affects our recording equipment, thank you very much. All right. The first item on the agenda is 2019-90. This is zoning application Z19-003. This item is to be tabled to the April 18th Planning and Zoning Meeting at the request of the applicant. Can I get a motion to table this item, please?
You mean April.
Did I, what did I say?
Seventeenth.
Ha-ha, I'm sorry, April 8th. Yes. Let me start over. Item 2019-90, Z19-003. This item is to be tabled to the April 8th Planning and Zoning Meeting at the request of the applicant. Can I get a motion to table, please? We have a motion, Mr. Bartlett, the second, Mr. Monroe. Please vote. The motion is tabled to the April 8th meeting, 7-0. Okay. The next item on our agenda is item number 2019-95. This is rezoning from O-N-I to O-I-P-D to add a medical office building and new parking for Emory Hospital. This is 12.69 acres, land lot 552, 3903, 3949, and 3969, South Cobb Drive, the Emory Clinic. Zoning request Z19-006. Can we get the background, please? Mr. Sudrath, thank you.
Let me start by talking about the zoning classification that's being requested. It's currently O-I, Office Institutional. It's going Office Institutional Plan Development. Plan Development has not been used frequently within the city. The Plan Development category is available for certain size residential or office or industrial or retail uses. In going through the application and working with them, because of the phasing aspects that we will discuss tonight, as well as the number of variances, some small, some larger, I felt it was better to actually take advantage of this Plan Development classification, because it allows us to understand the big picture for the hospital, although we are really only addressing Phase 1, but we will talk a little bit about Phase 2. They realize that, once they get to Phase 2 and have more specific plans, they will have to come back and amend the Plan Development to pick up everything that they need to do in Phase 2. But at least we understand what the big picture is for them. So having said that, it is from O-I to O-I-P-D. We all know where the hospital is because of the going from O-I to O-I-P-D, and what they are doing is really intensifying, if I can use that word, the campus by building a new medical office building with a new parking deck, improved surface parking in this first phase. There is no requirement, doesn't trigger any land use map changes for that. So what's on the screen is the proposed site plan. Just to orient you, what we've highlighted in sort of a purplish line are the existing facilities out there, whether it's the two medical office buildings on either side of the property, as well as the existing hospital building towards the back. Now, what we have, it's really the main part of this rezoning request, is to build a new medical office building that is up towards South Cobb Drive, as well as a new parking deck that will wrap around the existing medical office building that would be on the northern side of the property, and redo and improve the surface parking that currently exists in front of the hospital, as it stands today, as well as the parking that exists behind the hospital. Now, I talked about a number of variances, so I'm going to sort of take you through this slowly. It's outlined in detail in your report, but there is an issue about how the land development permit relates to obtaining GDOT approval because of the driveways and utility relocations. Normally, what our policy is city-wide on this is that you have to get GDOT approval first, but because of the length of time that it may take to get that, another condition has been proposed for that. Kevin Moore, our city engineer, is here to help me walk through that issue and answer any questions that anybody has regarding this. But if you recall, there is a condition listed dealing with sort of a halfway point on how to handle this issue with the state. Stream buffer issues, again, Kevin is here to answer any questions regarding that, but he is supportive of that. They are currently, the, one of the existing building currently exists in a stream buffer, and they're requesting that it just be maintained, as well as using buffer averaging for that. Again, staff's supportive of that. Within the zoning ordinance, there's multiple variances there. Although the front setback appears to be a huge difference, that's not because we actually mandate 120 feet. It has to do with the other buildings and so forth, and how it relates to that, but because this is ultimately a redevelopment of the site, to allow that front to occur, it triggers a variance issue. We don't say you have to be 120 feet from the road. It's a function of what's already on the site that creates that issue. And then we talk about, you know, building separations, roof slopes. Obviously, it's a flat roof. We require sloped roofs. So some of these are somewhat minor, some of them, you know, are a little greater in that. Then we get to landscape issues. Basically, staff is supportive of this with the understanding that some of the areas where this landscaping would go is ultimately going to be wiped out and have to be redone anyway with a Phase 2 on that. And then finally, with the sign ordinance, and you'll see this on a future picture here, having to do with how big their sign is, given the size of the building, they're asking for a larger sign, which, again, from staff's point of view on this, is acceptable. We've given larger, we've given variances to go beyond 325 feet on occasion when it is truly a community benefit, and that's what we are dealing with with this whole complex, is that the institutional nature of this hospital and its intensification of the campus has a great community benefit. This is the proposed elevation. As you can see, from the northeast and southwest of that, you know, the sign issue has to do with the Emory sign at the very top of that one section there. You can see there's no other signage on the building there. But this is what the look they are trying to achieve with. And this is the proposed parking deck. We all are familiar with the site, but I'll quickly go through, you know, what we have. Obviously, we've got, in the upper left, the existing medical office building that is on the northern side of the property. The upper right basically shows all three buildings. You've got, if you go from right to left, you've got the medical office building on the right, you've got the hospital building in the far back of the picture, and then in the far left is that northern building. The bottom left shows the existing medical office building on the south side, and then the bottom right, although there's a little bit of a glare there, actually is showing that there's two driveways into the property, and that gets into the GDOT approvals. Adjacent properties, obviously, you've got the power substation that's north of the property, as well as the large right-of-way that runs in front of the property as well across the street. You've got Delmar Gardens, and then to the south side, sorry, I just lost the name of it.
Ridgeview.
Thank you. Institute there. So obviously, the intensification of the site fits in with other uses that are nearby and adjacent to the property with that. Because this is a Plan Development, and because it is an office Plan Development, a lot of the conditions that are under the standard conditions within our zoning ordinance that we normally would require, the majority of those aren't triggered with this. So what we have left has to do with, you know, underground utilities, have to make the traffic improvements that are necessary, no debris can be buried on-site, you have to comply with the current tree ordinance, the landscape plans have to, you know, be prepared, you know, by a registered landscape architect, and then, you know, all of the yards and green space, you know, have to be sited. Those are the standard conditions that run with any zoning classification, but then we also go into the specific conditions that have to do with this development itself. So you have a front setback of 25 feet, a side setback of 10, a rear setback of 40, and then a building separation of 15 feet. The Fire Marshal's Office was heavily involved in reviewing the preliminary site plans that we had, so it appears that they can meet all of those access requirements on that, but there is a condition that they have to do such. The developer is obviously responsible for water and sewer improvements. Obviously, there's stuff in the area for that. Stormwater improvements, they're responsible for. The issue on the final issuance of the LDP is, we're not going to give the official approval for that, but we will allow some very preliminary grading and demolition work that is associated with that. Once Kevin, as our city engineer, approves that, to begin, actually begin before that GDOT approval comes in, and once it comes in, then we will finalize that permit out. But we will allow initial preliminary work to start. It was also felt that, in the traffic study that was submitted, that three months after the issuance of the final CO for that medical office building, the one that we're talking about tonight, that the applicant will indeed study the traffic conditions, again, at that point, and will provide, you know, whatever the modification or installations are warranted, that timeframe can be adjusted by the city engineers needed, and all of the improvements would be the responsibility of the applicant. From a lighting standpoint, again, this is sort of a blend of a standard condition. I rolled it over into a special condition because of the many different parking areas that we have, and the 12-plus acres size of the campus have to be, you know, low-intensity environmental type, and you can't have glare off of the property with that. They are also bound to the plans that they have submitted us, which is what items 14, 15, and 16 deal with, whether it's their site plan, whether it's the elevation of the hospital, elevation of the medical office building, or the parking deck. So all told, there's 16 conditions here. Staff is recommending approval with those 16 conditions. I know that there's representatives here for this request, if you have any questions of that, and I'm happy to answer any additional ones that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Sudrath. Any questions for Mr. Sudrath? Mr. Bartlett?
Hey, Ken, can you quickly go back to the elevations? I just want to make sure.
Is that quick enough?
Yep, there you go.
Bam.
So top northeast elevation, the far right, that's South Cobb Drive, then?
You're asking me, as a planner, that I'm supposed to tell you this?
Who will ask?
Yeah, you're looking at the building from, the top one would be, you're looking at it, the way I understand it, from South Cobb.
Going south on Cobb.
Is that correct? The top one is from South Cobb?
The top one is if you're facing, bottom one is if you're standing on South Cobb.
Okay.
Thank you.
I had it flipped. Sorry about that. Thanks, Tom. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Sudrath. At this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and fill in any of the gaps that may be in the plan from Mr. Sudrath's very detailed presentation. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing us to come before this meeting today. I am Mike Mason with Emory Healthcare, Vice President of Operations, and with me tonight, we also have the Architect of Record, Gil May, and Civil Engineer, Kate Triplet, to answer any of your questions. So I'll open it up. I can describe the services that are planned in the building, if you'd like to hear that, or entertain any other questions that you have.
Any questions for the applicant? No? Any questions for the architect, or any of the other, or the illustrious city engineer? Kevin Moore? Any questions there? I know there was some concern about storm detention. No? All right, well, let's see if there's any other comment from the public. Appreciate you coming in, Mr. Mason. All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to have anybody in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. All right. They must be waiting for something special. I'm sorry. This is a very, this is a very good thing for our community. I don't mean to belittle it at all, this, getting this area revitalized. Sitting here looking at the pictures, I remember many years ago, visiting this facility, let's stop it there. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Zoning request Z19-006, rezoning from O-I to O-I-P-D, data medical office building and a new parking for Emory Hospital, 12.69 acres, land lot 552, 3903, 3949, and 3969, South Cobb Drive, the Emory Clinic. I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Motion.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion to approve, Mr. Segreys. We have a second. Mr. Bartlett? My screen went blank, so let's see if we could vote, please. All right. Your application is approved, 7-0. Good luck. We look forward to seeing the progress out there. All right. This item will be heard before mayor and council next month. Mr. Sudrath, do you have the date? April 15th. All right. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is item 2019-89. This is zoning request Z19-004. This is rezoning from RM10 to RDA conditional for the construction of two single-family homes at a density of 5.71 units per acre. This is 0.35 acres at land lot 593. The address, 1601 Walker Street. Younger Homes is the applicant, Ms. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is Z19-004. You'll be hearing this this evening, and then I'll be going to mayor and council on April 15th of next month. So the location is 1601 Walker Street. It is 0.345 acres and is in Ward 3. Currently, it is a duplex, so it is being proposed to have two new detached single-family homes, so the density is going to remain the same, and it is going from RM10 to RDA conditional. So there is no land use change within, with this request. It is going from medium-density residential and remaining there with medium-density residential. This is the proposed site plan, so you can see they are two detached single-family homes. These are the setbacks. We are keeping the RDA setbacks. There are no variances for this request. So the front setback will be 25 feet, the side will be 7.5 feet, and the rear will be 30 feet. This is the stormwater detention facility. We will have one on each property. And then there will be a five-foot sidewalk with two-foot grass buffer, as well as a 50-foot right-of-way, which is common on Walker Street. These are the proposed home elevations. This one's Lot A, which is the right-hand elevation, and so you can see we have the front, rear, and side. Then Lot B is similar. Once again, we have the elevations of the front, rear, and side. This is a picture of the subject property. You can see it is currently a duplex. And then pictures of the adjacent properties. So right next door in the upper-left hand is actually one of the Younger's properties. They did that back in 2014. Same situation here, it was a lot split from a duplex. And then we have another R15 home up in the upper right, that's to the left of the properties, and then across the street, we have the Walker Street cottages. So the staff is recommending approval for this rezoning from RM10 to RDA conditional. We do have a couple stipulations. The standard conditions do still apply, with the exception of 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, 9, 10, 12, and 17 from Section 1201. So the first one is for the composition of the homes. We have the utilities, traffic improvements. There's no debris that may be buried. They do have to follow the tree ordinance. All the landscape plans must be prepared and stamped by a registered architect, and then the yards and common areas need to be irrigated and sotted, and then they do need to plant trees prior to being issued a CO. We also do have a few special conditions. We're just reiterating the setbacks of the front of 25 feet, side of 7.5, and the rear of 30. They need to keep a 22-foot driveway. They are going to have to increase the right-of-way to 50 feet. Once again, there is going to be a sidewalk mandatory. Then we have the structures of the height, or, excuse me, the height of the structures will be 35 feet. They will need to meet all fire access requirements from the Fire Marshal doing plan review, as well as any water and sewer improvements from the city engineer and public works. And then any stormwater improvements, again, by the city engineer. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Any questions for Ms. Crowe? Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about the plan. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, I'm Matt Younger. Thank you for your time tonight. These are a few more houses that we built on Walker Street. These are actually across the street from my house. I've been a resident out here in Williams Park for, I don't know, 10 years or so, and I've had the privilege of kind of working in my community and taking these old, kind of 1970s cedar duplexes that are kind of ending their lifespan and kind of converting them into new single-family homes. But I, there have been, I think on Walker Street, we've, this will be the eighth duplex that we've taken down, I think, maybe the 15th and 16th home that we've built over there. Right now, we're kind of branching out now a little bit around the corner to Matthew's Court and Matthew Street, and as you'll hear in the next bit here, Roswell Street, so... But yeah, I've just really enjoyed, you know, living in Williams Park and just kind of working in my community, so... Any questions on anything? I'll be happy to...
Any questions for Mr. Younger?
Yeah, a quick question.
Yep.
What's the proposed square footage of the two houses?
They're both 3,400 square feet on one and two. There'll be an unfinished basement, similar to the two houses that sold next door.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and sign the sign-in sheet at the podium. Nope? Okay. Well, we have no public comment. At this time, I'd like to entertain a mo-
I'd like to move that we approve zoning request Z19-004, rezoning from RM10- I'd like to move that we approve zoning request Z-19-004, rezoning from RM10 to RDA conditional for the construction of two, single-family homes at a density of 5.71 units per acre, 0.35 acres, landlot 593, 1601 Walker Street, M. Younger Homes.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. By. We have a second, Ms. Lightfoot. All in favor or opposed? Please vote. Your application is approved 7-0. Congratulations, good luck with your project. All right, the next item on the agenda is 2019-94. It's zoning request Z-19-005, rezoning from R-15 to R-10 conditional for, for, single-family homes at a density of 3.72 units per acre. This is 1.17 acre, landlot 561, this is 1420 and 1430, Roswell Street. Mr. Younger is the applicant, again. Can we-
Good evening, Joey Staub's, Planner 2. This request is Z-19-005, for Matt Younger Homes. He'll hear it tonight, Mayor and Council will hear it April 15th. This is 1420 and 1430, Roswell Street. Two lots with four structures on it currently. I don't know if they're all considered, single-family homes, but they're dwelling units of some type on that parcel. It's owned R-15 currently, to the north is General Commercial, to the east is RDA, and then it's R-15 around it. It's about 1.17 acres. The land use everywhere around it is moderate-density residential, so it being 3.72 units per acre doesn't require a land use change. This is the proposed site plan. There's only one variance for the front setback because of the curvature of the front property line, a portion of the deck, if it was a 25-foot front setback, a portion of the deck would extend over that setback line. So we've just, uh-
Excuse me. We-
Normally, there's a 25-foot front setback for R-10. That's what the zoning classification is proposed at. Because of the curvature of the front property line, on some of the lots, a portion of the deck was extending over the front setback line, so we've, they're proposing it to be a 20-foot front setback. The other setbacks are concurrent with what R-10 would require, which is the side, interior side is 7.5, the two exterior sides are 10 feet, and the rear is 15 feet. In the rear is where the stormwater detention facility is proposed, and they'll be donating or dedicating a portion of right-of-way to maintain a 50-foot right-of-way along Roswell Street, and they'll be putting in a five-foot sidewalk with a two-foot grass strip. Currently, there's a, basically, a three-foot sidewalk abutting the road, and then the other side of that sidewalk is a brick wall, or stone wall, I think it's shown here. So, our, our normal condition is that they put in two-foot grass strip, five-foot sidewalk. Either the wall has to be moved, or we keep a three-foot sidewalk. That's the decision that has to be made. Staff is not advocating either one, we're just stating what our normal conditions are. The developer has proposed to relocate that brick wall as an entry feature to that shared So these are the proposed home elevations. This is a picture of the subject property, and these are the adjacent properties. We've recommended approval with the standard conditions. They've got to put in a detention pond, utilities will be underground, they'll be responsible for any traffic improvements. The retention pond will be screened appropriately to be unobtrusive to homes inside and outside of the development. No debris can be buried under, under any lot or common area, and they'll be complying with the city's tree ordinance. Standard conditions are just the setbacks that they're bound to, 22-foot driveway, which is not a problem, because they've got a shared rear entry, garages. There'll be a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, and the minimum lot width is 50 feet. They'll have a minimum floor area of 1,500 square feet, which all the proposed homes are much larger than that. Condition I referenced earlier, that there'd be a five-foot sidewalk with two-foot grass buffer, they'll have a 15-foot stormwater easement, basically on the north property line, and then, uh, various other stipulations that are standard. They'll be bound to the elevations, and they'll be bound to the site plan. And again, that's the proposed site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Staub's. Any questions for Mr. Staub's?
Yeah, I have a question relative to the, the wall. You talked about some options that the builder's willing to, to work with, either to move the wall, or if we, if, if we agree that maybe the wall needs to stay, we would need to change some of the standard sidewalk stipulations that we normally do. So what's the process? How do we get a commitment, one way or the other, as part of this hearing to get agreement on that, or get it included into this to move over to City Council?
Either it'd be recommended that we do away with that one condition, to have the sidewalk, or to leave it in, and then the wall will be relocated.
Okay. Maybe we can hear from the builder about what, what his thoughts are, and what he would do with that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Staub's. Mr. Younger, if you would.
It's, um-
Welcome back.
Thank you, Joey. I guess they're not all as easy as the last one. So, as far as the wall is concerned, I come at it from two ways. One is like, developing the house, and two is like, a neighbor. So I live on Walker Street, and I have a two-year-old son, he goes to music class, or we go to Durham Park. Walking down Matthew Street is, is pretty sketchy, because they don't have much of a sidewalk there, and it's really, traffic kind of really moves down there pretty fast. The other option is going around the corner to Roswell Street, and even there, the sidewalk there is, is a little bit intimidating, because there's not much sidewalk in that, you know, if a car's, cars come pretty quick around that corner, and there's nowhere to really bail out, you know, so, I mean, it's really kind of, I, before I bought the property, I was like, this is, this is kind of sketchy, you know, because if a car were, there's no, there's no curb, it, the road goes right into the three-footed sidewalk into the wall. That being said, as far as the developer, I'm open to whatever, if, if the neighborhood wants to leave the wall there and keep the sidewalk, I'm okay with that, you know, where it is. I kind of thought on my own, I looked at the wall, and I've got a great stonemason, and I want to kind of keep the wall as, I think it's, you know, a nice artifact in the neighborhood, it's kind of got history, it's 100 years older, so I don't think the wall should go anywhere as far as another piece of property or anything, but I thought like, well, if we can put in the green strip, and we can put in the five-foot sidewalk, you know, maybe I can kind of set that wall back behind the sidewalk, and kind of make it, kind of turn down the alley and create like, a new entrance for the next 100 years, and really kind of set it up nice, and kind of get it out of harm's way, and get a kind of a win-win. But, you know, I'm kind of wanted, I mean, obviously, there's going to be some interest here from the neighbors as to how they want to deal with it, and I'm kind of open either way. I can see both sides of it, but I kind of proposed what I thought might make, you know, not everybody, I don't think everybody's going to be totally happy, but maybe everybody gets a little something with that. But, um, if there's any other questions on other things, I might just sit down and let people speak, and then maybe I'll have to come-
Come back up and answer some questions, we can do that.
What's the square footage on these homes?
3,400 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Those are, these are on a slab, there's, so.
All right, any other questions? All right, if you want to just grab a seat at the front, we'll, we'll grab you back. All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask anyone that'd like to come and speak in favor of or opposition to the application, please come forward now. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, I'm Keith Bentley, I live on Gilbert Street in Williams Park, and I think, first of all, as far as the rezoning itself, I mean, we have no objection to that, I mean, it's within the density requirements and the standards for the neighborhood, and, but, you know, we haven't had a lot of time, really, to talk about this wall. I have talked to Mr. Younger some, I've talked to a couple of people with the city staff, the community development, and the city engineer, and we really haven't quite been able to get in a room and kind of talk through some of these issues and questions, because you have some interest there. But that wall, just so, for the record, the neighborhood obviously would like to preserve that wall. It was built in 1938 by a gentleman who lived there, he was like, 10 years old when they built it with his dad, and it's been a neighborhood landmark, I don't know if you call it a historical thing or not, but it's certainly been a neighborhood landmark for a long time. So we want to do what we can to preserve it, plus we just think it's a pretty cool wall. So we had, we've had some discussions, like I said, there's questions about right-of-way, the effect it has on traffic calming, there's another project planned by the city on that corner there, which we've been talking about for quite a few years, actually, to put something in there to square off that corner, to make it a safer turn there, by that music school. So that's, that's at least in some stage of planning with the city, and then we have the issue of pedestrian safety in the sidewalk, and that sort of thing. We have some, a meeting already scheduled between all the parties involved to talk about that, and talk through options, and what might be done. We certainly, you've heard Mr. Younger say he's willing to consider options, I think the city's willing to consider options, but we just haven't had time to work through that yet. And at least from my perspective, I don't know about what actually is legal in terms of what's being approved tonight, but we don't have any objection to the zoning going forward, and let us work out that after the fact, if that's within the, rather than to have this commission or Mayor and Council have to decide yes or no on whether it's a sidewalk or something else.
Okay. Yeah, we'll see if we can't figure out a way to word around that one.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anybody else? Yeah, come on. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Council, Councilman Paul, Councilpeople.
Wait, hold on, hold on, okay, I got to stop you there. We're the Planning Board.
Planning Board.
We don't want to get, we don't want anybody calling us tonight. Sorry.
I'm Chip Parker, I own 1465 Whitfield Street. It's adjacent to this property here. My concern is currently, and I've spoken, I have not spoken to Mr. Younger, I did speak to Mr. Page, I also spoke to the prior owner, I've spoken to the City Engineer as well. Whenever it rains, the catch basin on Roswell Street collects water, and there is a channel that takes the water off the street and directs it into my backyard, and my backyard floods every time it rains. I brought some photographs, if you'd like to see them, I'm happy to hand these to whomever. City Engineer, about this problem in 2017 and 2018, I had proposed my own solution, but it would have required me to get a discharge permit into one of the outlets on Whitfield Street. The City Engineer never responded to me, never gave me a verdict on the discharge permit, but right now, as you can see in the pictures, there's a photograph of the flooding, I get about eight inches of water in my backyard, and it's a duplex. My intent had been to redo the duplex, live on one side, rent the other. While waterfront property is very lucrative, intermittent waterfront property is not. I tried to communicate with Mr. Page about the problem, I tried to communicate with the gentleman that owned the property prior. Unfortunately, his representative told me he did not have the state of mind to be able to resolve it, but it's been an ongoing issue for me since I've owned this property. In looking at the plan, the retention pond concerns me as well, because that retention pond is located right at about the point where the water from Roswell Street goes into my backyard. So, I would ask the zoning not be approved until we can come to some sort of resolution on the flooding of my property.
Okay. Really appreciate you coming out, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
And we're going to share these pictures, and we'll get them all the way around to the City Engineer. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I'm Casey Claven, I live at 1475 Roswell Street, and I just wanted to kind of reiterate some of what Keith said about the wall in front of these two properties. It was built by Paul and Kraft and Cochran. It's an historic element in the neighborhood. Williams Park is Smyrna's oldest residential neighborhood, we have built elements in the neighborhood dating back to, you want to share that joke with us, or you're just going to chuckle to yourself?
I was just, I'm going to count how many times you say it this time, that's all. Go ahead, and just finish, okay? You don't have to grandstand, you just finish your, your presentation, okay?
We have built structures in the neighborhood dating back to the 1880s, and that's an integral part of what makes our neighborhood what it is, and why our neighborhood is a desirable place to live. In accommodating new residents, new residences, for the many new residents who want to live in our neighborhood, we have been losing a lot of historic structures, and we hope that that wall is not going to be one of them. If what the city generally needs is a two-foot grass strip and a five-foot sidewalk, I might point out that that wall is about two feet thick, and maybe the wall could stay where it is in lieu of a grass strip, and put the sidewalk inboard of that wall. That would, that would make the strongest safety situation for what Mr. Younger is calling a sketchy situation. I'll also point out that we've been working with the city for four years now about that intersection and the sidewalks along there, which, as Mr. Younger pointed out, are below grade, below-street grade. When you walk on that sidewalk, and it's a curve, if it's a slippery day and a car slides, they come right off into the sidewalk. There is one section of that wall missing because a car took it out some years ago. So, anyway, that's my point, and I'm going to be part of the group that's meeting with the Mr. Younger, and, and talking about this, but I just wanted to, to let everybody know that, that it's not one person, or three people, or six people in our neighborhood. That wall is important to us as a group. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Claven. Anybody else? Any other further discussion? We got the applicant here, you want to come back and, and talk to us a little bit more about the wall? It sounds like there's a lot to be done with the wall.
Um, I think the wall, yeah, I don't have any more to add to the wall. I think, as far as the retention pond and stuff like that in the pipe, you know, I do know that the street's been there a long time, that's a natural, you know, drainage system that was probably put in when the neighborhood was developed, long before the houses in the neighborhood were built, so that's an existing condition. Kevin, the new City Engineer here, is, I mean, honestly, I mean, I've been doing this a long time here in the city, and he's been great, very responsive, and- And I've enjoyed working with Kevin, and, and I think, you know, he's been, we've talked about this. I propose that I go in between the properties where it's like a four-foot ditch that's overrun with weeds and grass and rocks. What I wanted to do is kind of clean it up and pipe all that water down in between. Right now, there's, you know, kind of an open ditch next to the parking lot where the kids go to music class and stuff. And I just think, I thought it would be better if I paid to have it all piped back along the property line. Now, the water coming from the pipe is water that comes from the street. I'm not adding any water to the pipe from my property. I'm just, I'm basically, actually, probably reducing the amount of water that's entering that pipe because it's now not going to be an open ditch. It's going to flow underground to my property line. And I haven't spoken with the property owner behind me, but I usually work with the homeowners, and I would think if he's interested in handling the water when it comes onto his property, I'd be open to continuing that ditch with my guys and continuing the piping. Obviously, you know, at this point, you know, at his expense, you know, but, you know, wouldn't mark it up any, but just in the interest of working with him. If he does want to kind of continue that pipe underground while we're doing that, I think it kind of makes it more affordable for him, and that's the one opportunity he can get that done for a good price. Full disclosures, like he pays for the material, you know, and, but, you know, I'm not adding more water to that. You know, that's strictly just, the volume of the water is generated at the street going underground. I still believe there'll actually be less volume of water by the time it gets to him now. But once the water, once that, I, I kind of maintain that that ditch was there when he bought the property, and he bought into an existing condition, and if he wants to remedy it, I'm more than happy to work with him, you know, while we're out there doing it. We're happy to, you know, help him pipe his, help him continue that pipe into the manhole and, and prevent any water from pooling up in his backyard. But it's kind of up to him to kind of work with me on that. But I'll be happy to work with it, and I'll show him, hey, this is, how much this concrete pipe cost. You know, I'm not here to kind of make money off them. I just, you know, try and help him, help him out.
Help reach a resolution on an existing condition. Any questions? Any other questions? We've, okay. All right. Kevin, can you come to the mic for a minute? Mr. Moore, please. You have the unfortunate circumstance that I have a brother-in-law that's named Kevin Moore that lives in the city as well.
Not the attorney.
And not the attorney. No, there's, there's that Kevin Moore as well. And so I'll never forget your name.
Okay.
Ever.
Good.
Well, welcome.
Good or bad?
Good or bad, absolutely. Welcome to the meeting. Can you speak specifics or anything, or generalizations on the storm detention, how this might help or hurt the neighbors?
Well, like Mr. Younger said, there are, there are two components to this plan. There's the 18-inch pipe that you see, that dark line there at the right-hand side. That's just conveying water from Roswell Street from, from, I guess that's east to west. So there will be no increase along that section of the pipe. So what the detention facility, the purpose of that is to capture the water that's created by the development. And we'll have to meet the three components of our stormwater management ordinance, which would be water quality, channel protection, and peak flow reduction. So what that pond will, I'll use an example of, let's say, today, at that point, that study point, there's 10 CFS, cubic feet per second, of water flowing from that development at that point. What our ordinance says is that that has to be reduced by a minimum of 10%. So whereas it's 10 today, it'll be nine in the future. So the rate will not be allowed to increase as it exits the property. I have not had any discussions with Mr. Younger about piping that all the way through. I'm certainly not opposed to that. There would be some things that we'd be looking for as far as, you know, would the depths allow that, the connection point, what's the condition of that inlet, maybe some, there would be an easement that we needed to be dedicated, but that's certainly something that we could entertain.
Okay. But based on the plan that exists today, and it should reduce the peak flow going on to the neighborhood.
That's correct. Well, I haven't seen the specific calculations at this point. We just kind of asked for a preliminary overall plan.
Right.
But part of my review will be to, to verify that for each of the design storms that we look at at the city, the one year through the 100-year, that our ordinance says that it has to be reduced by a minimum of 10%.
Okay.
So that's something that I'll be looking for in my review.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Moore? Yeah, Mr. Bartlett.
Real quick, the pictures that were given to us, can you tell us, is that, is that where the black pipe is shown? Is that that swale?
So on Roswell Street, there's a catch basin.
Yes.
The catch basin then runs into, that was created. The ditch channels the water along the property line. Broken fence you see in the background.
Mm-hmm.
That's where it dumps it in my backyard. It then puddles in my backyard, flows around the foundation. Storm drain that my yard and my neighbor's yard.
So your backyard is at, essentially, to the right of the proposed detention. That's your backyard.
Yeah. From how I interpret the drawing, the detention pond, it's like it would be near and close.
Okay.
Okay. So if that channel runs along that same area, it would be redirecting that flow into the detention pond before it?
That's, the channel, I've spoken to prior owners about trying to put gravel in it.
Mm-mm.
Slow, slow. The storm drain on Whitfield Street, the place they are intending to take the bomb, opposite from my yard is fairly level, whereas this.
Okay. So two things are happening. You're, what the proposed pipe is doing is tying into a headwall, and instead of taking the water on a ground, it's going to put it into a pipe. The pipe's going to increase velocity of, of the, of the water as it, as it goes through the pipe toward the headwall that's down at the, past the detention pond. Is that accurate?
Well, that'll, that'll be part of our review. That, I mean, I haven't seen the plans, but.
This is a preliminary plan.
This is a preliminary plan, but velocities and volumes would be something that I'll be looking at in, in the review process.
I would have concern about increasing the amount of water.
Understandable.
Yeah.
This show was not.
Yeah.
No, that wasn't.
Yes.
I did meet the city engineer. I had achieved, I thought was a reasonable reason. Problem is, I couldn't get a discharge. I've still got to take the works up.
Right. All right.
Downstream conditions will be a part of my review, and we can roll that in at that point.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Kevin, can you, can you address the traffic calming in, on Roswell Street?
Uh, yes. So just preliminarily, this will be a public works project, and just in a nutshell, if you're going, I guess it's, what's direction is that? Eastbound on Roswell? You can see that that radius is, is pretty significant there, and people have a tendency to, to not stop at that stop condition. So what we're planning to do is reduce the size of that radius to, to encourage people to stop at that stop condition. So it'll be curbing and, and some re-striping and some signage there to, to, to encourage that stop condition. It'll be in, in the street.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore?
I understand. I understand that it's already marked, but as you could, that, that's correct, and that's the, that's the problem, that it is ignored.
Yeah.
So what we will do is, is we will tighten up that radius, so it'll be, you know, not as easy to, to cut that corner.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you much, Mr. Moore. Much appreciated. All right. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Any further discussion in the board? Nope. All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion. Oh, hold on. Let's talk about this wall. Can we, can we put some verbiage in this motion that gives them flexibility going to mayor and council, or you just want to?
Yeah, Ken, I was going to suggest that we offer a conditional approval based on mutually agreeable settlement around this wall issue prior to it going before city council. Can, can we make a motion of that effect?
Y'all have the right to add conditions or modify or take away a condition. In this case, it's probably a combination of multiple.
Yeah. If we don't take away the condition for, here's my fear. If we, if we approve it as presented, he could turn around, if he got approval, and bulldoze the wall, right?
Correct.
Because he's got to do his job, right? So I almost feel like you need to remove that condition and give them flexibility to work on that issue. You follow me? Where you remove the sidewalk.
Remove the, the right-of-way sidewalk condition?
Yeah. Yeah. And I would, there's a minimum of at least two conditions that we need to talk about, and I'd like to ask Kevin to come back up.
So, yeah, there are two conditions, the, the right-of-way condition and the sidewalk condition, because if, if the, if the right-of-way is dedicated as we're requesting, that wall will fall within the city's right-of-way, and it's our standard practice that we do not allow walls in the right-of-way just for safety and long-term maintenance. So you're right, Ken, that there are two, two components to that.
Which would be 15 and 17.
Okay. So if we, if we remove 15 and 17, what do we need to put back to say this is what we're doing as we move forward? Or do you, or do you just want to remove 15 and 17?
Now, I, I think we need to, I think there should be a statement regarding the wall of encouraging the, the interaction between the neighborhood and the developer on this, and not just remove the two conditions. The, the problem with making it a condition is, what do you do if they don't really come to an agreement at that point?
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't want the city be, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for the city to become the referee kind of issue. So it, it may be that we, and Kevin, please, I'm, I'm just sort of doing this on the fly. If you remove 15 and 17, 15 for, for the audience is the sidewalk, the five-foot sidewalk, two-foot strip. 17 is the five-foot right-of-way dedication issue. And they, they normally go hand in hand with that. So you, you could make a motion for approval, removing those two items and encourage, I'm hesitant to make it a condition, but, but maybe in, there's an encouragement that y'all, you know, strongly suggest, strongly encourage the meeting, and that that meeting takes place between now and the council meeting on, on April 15th, so that, that then Mr. Younger can, can make a proposal saying, hey, this is what we've agreed to, or, and at least it's been addressed.
I think that's fine.
One way or the other. I, I just don't want to put, I, I don't want to put the city as the referee here, because it, it's really, if it's in the right-of-way, our standard is we're taking it down.
That's correct.
I think Mr. By has got a, got a handle on what, what we need to do here. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Mr. Sudrith. All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion, Mr.?
Yeah, I would like to move that we approve zoning request. Z19005 rezoning R15 to R10 conditional for single-family homes at the density of 3.72 units per acre, 1.17 acres landlot 561 through 1420, 1430 Roswell Street, younger homes, with the stipulation that we remove conditions 15 and 17, with a strong encouragement by P&amp;Z for the parties involved to reach a mutually agreeable solution prior to this coming before city council on, I believe, April 15th.
Sudrith, is that all right with you?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Do we have a second? We have a second, Mr. Monroe? All right. The motion with the removal of item 15 and 17 and the strong recommendation as stated by Mr. By is approved 7-0. Hopefully, that gives you guys an opportunity to hash out a plan with the wall. Okay? Thank you all very much for your comments. All right. The next item on the agenda is item 2019-98. This is a request for a change to the future 2040 future land use plan, excuse me, in Williams Park neighborhood. This is the City of Smyrna Community Development Department, and Mr. Sudrith is going to give us the background on this item.
Quick background, which is listed in your report, is this, this really started last fall. We had a rezoning request that ultimately was approved that led into every, you know, a specific understanding of the land use plan in that particular area off of Spring Street in Williams Park. The neighborhood requested that we look at that section of the land use plan again. I took that request to council before we started on this to make sure that they were willing to spend staff, time and resources to look at it. They concurd and said, yes, we would like you to relook at that area. You know, the, the overall land use plan, as you guys may recall, was approved in October of 2017. And there was a change in some of the property in the particular area of Williams Park that's under discussion tonight. So that was authorized by council for us to go back and look at that. So that's why we're here tonight. We held a, sort of a neighborhood-type meeting earlier where we had 36 people attend. We asked, were they supportive of changing it basically back to where it was, not completely back to where it was, but almost back to where it was? And there were 33 yeses and three noes. Now, obviously, we don't take head counts. We don't encourage people to count heads. In zoning requirements, the courts are very clear that we cannot discharge our authority just by, based on the number of people who show up at a meeting. The rationale for that court decision is not everybody can come to the meeting. So just taking a head count is not sufficient. But it does show that there is indeed an interest in the neighborhood to look at changing this. So what you have on the screen is that section of Williams Park that is really under, that's been their concern, and it's under consideration. So everything that's outlined in a, in a bluish teal color is what we're talking about. So it's basically moving everything down to like one block, one street, but it does sort of have that leg. leg or foot associated with it as it runs the railroad. Again, this is a land use change, it's not a zoning change. It doesn't change the zoning of the existing property. You know, we're not changing, you know, the yellow that's shown there, which is a single-family classification. We're not changing the light industrial that's shown there. It's just a land use change, which is a goal for future development. So that's what we're here tonight, as you can see on the screen. We've broken down the acreage with regard to whether it's single-family and how much is involved in commercial, how much is involved in the light industrial. So here, you know, the land use plan would go from mixed use in this area to a moderate-density residential, which would be in line with the density standards that have already been referenced a couple of times already tonight with that. But it would only affect those areas that are outlined in blue, with a blue line on the map. You know, just, you know, pictures of the area. And then staff's recommendation here is to recommend changing the area that I just identified on our 2040 land use, future land use map for mixed use to moderate-density residential. Happy to answer any questions. It's, it's a complex issue, but it's simple in terms of execution. It, if you want to do it, it's easy enough to do. Staff has looked at it, we've talked to the neighborhood about it, they're supportive of it. It's a land use change again, not a zoning change, the zoning does not change. So I think as we had talked about in our earlier, that this sets a goal. It sets what the desire is. I think we said in our report that actually the land use plan, the future land use plan actually came about in 1990 and that this area has changed almost every time there's been an update. You know, it's gone from one classification to another classification to another classification. And now it's going back. So staff's recommending approval to remove that mixed use.
And just to be clear, this is strictly associated with the 2040 future land use map, affects no current zonings?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Sudrith?
Mr. Sudrith, just a point of clarification. I mean, when we vote, I mean, is there any legal or label or anything else that just says a portion of Williams Park will do that in a motion?
It's based on the map.
Okay.
The map will be changed as identified there, those areas that are highlighted in the blue line. Those will be the areas that would change. And we would do that map change in-house to, you know, to eliminate that mixed use and put in the correct color, basically, and the key for moderate density.
Our motion should include the referencing staff's map recommendation changes. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to have anyone that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this change. Please come forward now. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, good evening. Lemuel Ward, 1496 Spring Street. I've lived in Williams Park since before it was Williams Park. And we are somewhat of a victim of our own success here. The reason that we suggested and took this to Mr. Blackburn and to the staff is that the problem here is that mixed use is going to be used to increase the density of residential housing. And that's what we wanted to avoid, that's why we asked to go back to moderate-density residential. And the problem there is, as policy is, is that those small one-way streets simply won't support high-density multifamily or any kind of a true mixed use. If you're going to do apartments on top, some kind of mixed use on the bottom, you simply won't be able to get in and out. On my way here today, I went down to Johnquil to come around rather than trying to go across the railroad track because I knew how long it was going to take. And that's the kind of thing we're trying to avoid. And we have worked hard in Williams Park to support the city. And we've done things like when we were here, we understood that Mr. Younger had the right to take two of those properties, that he had two, he owned two single-family residences and he made, is going to make two single-family houses out of it. We've tried to be good, we've tried to be good stewards of the properties where we live. And we're trying to make sure that we preserve the quality of life in Williams Park. Because if this stays mixed use, you're not going to see anything except a much higher density in residential because there's truly not going to be any mixed use here. And I don't think it's appropriate because of the lack of infrastructure and the, and there's really no good way to do it. I mean, because of the railroad track and where Roswell Street and Spring Streets sit together, there's really not much else that can be done. So we would appreciate this planning and zoning commission support. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Welcome back, Mr. Benley.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that I wanted to support the proposed change. As Liam has said, I mean, we think learned a lot about the role of future land use last fall. I think Mr. Sudrith alluded to that. And it's not a zoning change, but it sure opens the door for that. So that, that is what we would like, why we'd like to have this changed back. The subject property there, that's outlined there, is the last large, underdeveloped, it's not, I'm not going to say undeveloped, but underdeveloped parcel in Williams Park. It's a good chunk of property, it's 11 acres as pointed out there. Most, a good chunk of that property right in the middle is owned by a small Baptist church there. And their, their membership is aging and declining. And I know for a fact that they have been approached by developers to sell that property and so far they haven't, but one day they will.
Yeah.
And we just, it's a valuable piece of real estate and we just want to see it, when it is ultimately redeveloped, whenever that day is, that is consistent with the character and the density of the neighborhood as it exists today. Again, that's why a lot of my neighbors are here to support this. And because we all experienced, as we were coming over here tonight, that the traffic on Spring Road was backed up past that property at 6 o'clock. I was coming on Roswell and it was just like people were driving on the wrong side of the road.
Yeah.
And all through that intersection, it's complete chaos out there when that happens. And we certainly don't want it to get worse.
Absolutely.
So anyway, that's my comments, thank you.
Thank you much, Mr. Benley. Anyone else? Ms. Klavien, welcome back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want a quick point of clarification. It was referred to as the 2040 land use plan. Is that the land use plan that is currently in use?
Yes.
So it's 2040 designation is we're using it until that date. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, it'll be updated prior, obviously, I mean, the process will start prior to that, but yes.
Good evening, you're welcome.
Ron Davis, I live at 1351 Roswell Street. I just want to give a little perspective to what the land use plan's importance is. Back in the early 2000s, we had the fortune of having developers wanting to come into our neighborhood to start helping us develop and redevelop. Of course, that was for a profit motive, obviously. The good news was that they were interested in building there and helping us. But the bad news is they wanted to do it at extremely high densities. At the time, we had a low-density category, one to three units per acre, a mid-density, three to six, and a high-density, six and above. Well, they all wanted to come in at six units per acre and higher. And this went on for several years and we were pretty successful working with the mayor and the council and the planning and zoning commission to hold those densities down. But it was hard work. We spent our time in meetings here with the council and with developers trying to hold that density down to protect the character and the quality of the neighborhood. Well, we went to the city eventually, and I think it was '04, '05, don't hold me to the date. And we said, hey, we got a problem, work with us. And this was before Ken and Rusty and Caitlin and Joey's time. But what we did was ask them to create a special land use plan category for Williams Park. We wanted four units per acre max and we had to settle for four and a half. And this was about a year process. So we settled at four and a half. And the city has done a very good job working with us and developers since then to hold the density to four and a half. There are exceptions, obviously, we had one tonight. But we can't fight that because it's 5.7. It's taken out an old duplex with two families occupying it and putting in two nice homes. The density's higher, but that's okay. But overall, the city has helped our neighborhood because of this land use plan, hold that density down. And we appreciate that. And I have one comment and I'll quit. I think all of y'all know that we try to know what's going on in the city as relates to Williams Park and our neighborhood and in general. Case in point, Belmont Plaza or Johnquil, Belmont, et cetera. But this land use plan change, and this is no criticism of Ken or anybody else, but it caught us by surprise. So I think the city needs to look at, I mean, I know we're not going to make another one until 2040, but when we do, I think we need a better, better means of communicating with the people that it's going to affect. Because we didn't know about this, I didn't know about it until Brad Thompson came in to rezon his home on, I can't think of the name of the street now, the one.
Foster.
Yeah, Foster Street there, that's when I found out about it because he used that 5.02 density he uses as a basis for it to change from moderate to mixed use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just, just for general clarification, since the length of the land use plan came up, we do 20-year plans. We are replacing a plan, but the state mandates us to look at that plan every 10 years. So we have no choice. So I don't want anybody leaving the room thinking, oh, we're never going to have to talk about this again for, you know, 20 years. No, you, we're going to have to talk about it again in 10 years because we're mandated by the city, by the state to look at it. That doesn't mean it's going to change, it just means it's got to be looked at again, as for the entire city. So I just wanted that clarification out there.
Thank you, Mr. Sudrith. Any other public comment? Okay, we're going to close the public comment. All right, it's closed. I want to make one point. I own a business that leases part of this property. I wanted to be clear with you guys that it's a light industrial classification that in a lot of ways pigeonholes the ownership, which, and I have spoken to the owners of the property and they are opposed to this zoning. They don't live in Smyrna. And I did tell them that I would convey their thoughts. And I told them to reach out to city staff if they wanted more, more communication than that. But it does limit the uses on this property. I don't have a financial stake in it, other than I leased the property. It holds back the wheels of improvement there. And I just want you guys to be fully aware of that. And I know, and I, I didn't say anything tonight, but Williams Park regularly comes to our meetings and you guys continue to be the most respectful, compassionate, caring group of neighbors in Smyrna. And I, and we appreciate it because, you know, a lot of groups get up here and, and they want to throw things at us. But we do appreciate the, the fact that you take the time to be prepared. When you get here, you, you make your point and you move on. And we do appreciate that. Williams Park is a fantastic neighborhood. It is the oldest neighborhood in Smyrna. That was a friendly little dig. So anyway, any other further comment about this item? All right, Mr. By?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the, that we approve the request for a change to the 2040 future land use plan in Williams Park neighborhood. City of Smyrna Community Development Department as indicated in the maps that Mr. Sudrith showed during the presentation this evening.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. By. We have a second, Ms. Lightfoot. Please vote. Motion's approved 7-0. All right.
This will also, it'll go to council on the 15th as well.
April 15th?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the last item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the February 11th, 2019 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made at this time? I have a motion to approve the minutes, Ms. Harrington. Second, Ms. Lightfoot. Please vote. The minutes are approved 7-0. Again, thank you guys for joining us here at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any other further comment, Mr. Sudrith?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to congratulate our senior planner for community development, Rusty Martin, and the birth of his second child about 10 days ago. A baby girl and everybody is fine and home and all is good.
That is excellent news. Congratulations to Mr. Martin and his family. Any other discussion? All right, this meeting is adjourned at 7:27 PM.